Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the special joint meeting of the Cupertino City Council and Cupertino Planning Commission. Madam City Clerk, can you conduct both roll calls?
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Sinks?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Here.
Mayor Sharp?
Here.
Chair Moore?
Present.
Vice Chair Wang?
Here.
Commissioner Feng?
Here.
Commissioner Saxina?
Here.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Here.
Great. Welcome, everybody. So we have one item in this special meeting. It's a study session. The subject is the state housing law, Housing Accountability Act SB 330, and the density bonus law. So we are ready for the staff to conduct the joint study session.
Good evening, members of the City Council and Planning Commission. My name is Winter King. I'm an attorney with Shoot Mahoney &amp; Weinberger, and I am here tonight with my colleague Caitlin Brown to present to you a study session training on California state housing law. I would note, we also have with us this evening, and are very lucky to have, two planners from San Francisco's Planning Department, Kate Connor, who's a principal planner, and Carly Grobe, who's a senior planner. And they very kindly agreed to join tonight to answer questions you might have, in particular about how San Francisco implements the state density bonus law. Tonight, we have an hour for this training, and we're planning to cover four state housing laws: the Housing Accountability Act, the Permit Streamlining Act, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, and state density bonus law. There's lots to cover. We are planning to cover our material in 40 minutes. And Mayor Sharp, would it be okay to hold questions from council members and planning commissioners until the end of that presentation?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, great. Thank you. Whenever I do these housing trainings, I like to start with just a brief discussion of why we're here. Obviously, as everybody knows, the state legislature has enacted a number of bills, either modifying existing housing legislation or adding new legislation over the past few years. And so I think it's good to focus in on, as we start to think about these statutes, what is the problem that the legislature is trying to solve here? And really, this comes down to housing affordability across the state. A majority of California renters, so that's more than 3 million households, pay more than 30% of their income toward rent, and nearly half pay more than 50% of their income toward rent. Of the 50 cities in the country with the highest rent, 33 are in California. We also have seven out of 10 of the most expensive real estate markets in the country. And of course, this leads to an exacerbation of homelessness across the state. In Sacramento County, homelessness increased 47% from the 2016-2017 period until today. And in Santa Clara County, homelessness rose by 13%. So how is the legislature trying to solve this problem? Well, one way, and the focus of our discussion tonight, is by either enacting or strengthening state housing laws that are designed to either streamline or clarify the local housing entitlement process. The first of those statutes we're going to talk about is the Housing Accountability Act. This statute has been with us for a long time. It was enacted in 1982, and is sometimes referred to as the Anti-NIMBY Act. And in general, what this statute provides is that for all housing projects, cities cannot disapprove the project or reduce the density if it complies with all objective, quantifiable written development standards, unless the local government makes two findings: first, that there are specific adverse impacts upon public health or safety that would result from the project or the density; and second, that there's no feasible way to mitigate these impacts other than by reducing density. The Housing Accountability Act also provides some procedural requirements. So if a city considers a housing development to be inconsistent with its development standards, its objective development standards, it must provide the applicant with notice within either 30 or 60 days, depending on the size of the project. In 2019, the legislature amended this statute in a couple of important ways. First is they added a provision that describes which ordinances, policies, and standards will apply to any given housing development application. And those, in general, are going to be the standards that were in place when a preliminary application was submitted. We're going to talk a little bit more about this concept of the preliminary application when we talk about the Permit Streamlining Act. But basically, it's the first submission of materials, and the state law describes exactly what has to be in that submission. And so what this new provision does is it really freezes in place the development standards that were in effect at the time the applicant submits this preliminary application. There are several important exceptions to this new rule. First, if a city or county has adopted and published an index for annually adjusting fees, charges, or other monetary exactions, the adjusted fees can be applied to the project. In addition, if the city establishes that it's necessary to impose additional standards on the project in order to mitigate or avoid a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety, those new conditions may be applied even if they weren't in effect at the time of the preliminary. Likewise, cities and counties may impose SEQA mitigation measures. And in fact, for all four of the statutes we're talking about tonight, SEQA remains applicable. None of these statutes attempt to streamline projects away from SEQA or otherwise provide an exemption from SEQA. Two last exceptions to this rule: one is if a project takes a very long time to actually get constructed. So if a project has not commenced construction within two and a half years following the date of final approval, the local government may apply additional new standards. And likewise, if a project is substantially revised after the preliminary application, meaning a change of more than 20% in terms of number of residential units or square footage. The second major change to the Housing Accountability Act from 2019 is that the legislature imposed a limit of no more than five hearings to process housing development projects that comply with applicable objective standards. Hearings are defined in the statute, and it's a pretty broad definition. In addition, if a city continues a hearing from one date to another, the statute considers that continued hearing to actually be a second hearing. So it's something to keep in mind going forward. I always think it's interesting to note that in the Housing Accountability Act, the concept of objective standards has been with us for a while. In 2019, the legislature did, however, adopt a definition of objective, and that definition is the same as the definition of objective in SB 35, which is a housing streamlining statute from 2017. And so the definition is in the statute, which you all have. The way I tend to think about objective and how you interpret this definition is that a standard is objective if I can read it and I can tell whether, how to comply with it and whether I'm in compliance without having to go through any consultation or process other than just reading it. So definitely, we've seen a shift in focus on objective standards in these recent housing bills. Moving on to the Permit Streamlining Act, and I know we're covering a lot of material here, but thought it would be helpful to give a high-level discussion of these. And then, of course, we're happy to answer more detailed questions. The Permit Streamlining Act applies to certain development projects and basically establishes timelines and other processes for handling development applications. It's important to note that the Permit Streamlining Act does not apply to ministerial permits or approvals or to legislative acts such as general plan amendments, zoning amendments, specific plans. In general, what the Permit Streamlining Act has done for a while is set out a pretty routine process for dealing with development applications. So an application is submitted. The city will review for completeness and provide an incomplete letter or a complete letter within 30 days of the application. There are deadlines for conducting SEQA review and other deadlines for just processing the application. The Permit Streamlining Act also requires cities and counties to make lists available to the public that specify in detail the information that's required for a complete application. And though these lists may be revised, the revisions generally apply prospectively and not to pending applications. In 2019, the legislature also amended this statute a bit. The biggest change was the addition of Government Code Section 65941.1, which is the preliminary application checklist requirement that we discussed in the context of the Housing Accountability Act. And basically, this just requires that for all jurisdictions across the state, they adopt this preliminary application checklist and prepare an application form that is consistent with it. And it just sets out, kind of in list fashion, the materials that are required of a development applicant to submit this preliminary application. The 2019 amendments also required cities and counties to basically take this list and make it their own and create an application form. But if they do not, the State Housing and Community Development Department will do that, and applicants can use that HCD form. However, this preliminary application is limited solely to the items that are in the Permit Streamlining Act. Cities can't add to it. They have to follow the list exactly. Once this preliminary application is submitted, an applicant is required to submit a full application within 180 days. And what goes into the full application above and beyond the items in the preliminary application checklist is something that cities and counties have more control over. But they do have to be published, and it has to be clear. And what's in this application checklist is all that you can ask for. You can't ask for things outside of it. And the Permit Streamlining Act does include a few mandatory elements for this full application. That's in the statute. One of them, for example, is the applicant must include information that would allow the city to determine compliance with some new requirements about replacing demolished dwelling units, for example. An additional amendment to the Permit Streamlining Act is that, you know, again, cities are required to determine completeness within 30 days of receiving this full application. And then, they must have a process for an appeal of this completeness determination and must provide a written determination on the appeal within 60 days. Under the Permit Streamlining Act, the applicant in the city may agree to an extension of time limits, and cities can require a reasonable fee to cover the cost of implementing it. And then the last change from 2019, substantial change, is to require jurisdictions to make available on their websites the regulations, standards, conditions that govern development within their jurisdiction, including what type of development is allowed, what fees are charged, et cetera. Turning to the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, this is a new Government Code Section 66300 that was added by SB 330. And it includes a number of really significant changes and limitations on local regulation of residential development. So in particular, this statute provides, this new Government Code section provides, that on land where housing is an allowable use, there are a number of development policy standards or conditions that cities just are not permitted to enact following this statute. So one of them is cities may not reduce density or intensity of use below what was in place on January 1, 2018, unless there is a concurrent increase in density or intensity elsewhere in the city, so that there's no net loss in residential capacity. And I think it's important to note that the types of regulations that can impact or reduce density, it's not simply your your express density requirements or limitations, but also could include reductions to height, floor area ratios, new or increased open space or lot size requirements. So I think this one is going to be challenging to implement, and in particular, to determine if you increase minimum frontage requirements in this part of town, what will it take to increase density or intensity elsewhere in order to maintain that residential capacity? In addition, jurisdictions may not impose a moratorium on housing or mixed-use developments absent findings of an imminent threat to public health and safety of residents who would be affected by the moratorium. In addition, any moratorium would need to be approved by HCD. So it's not just a matter of making findings. There would have to be HCD approval. Cities may not impose or enforce new design standards that aren't objective following January 1, 2020. So subjective standards that are already in place are okay, as long as you're not dealing with some other statute that prohibits application of subjective standards. But you may not impose or enforce new subjective standards going forward. Nor may cities cap or limit the number of housing units that can be approved or cap population. There are some exceptions for voter initiatives that were approved before 2005, primarily in agricultural areas. One carve-out that the legislature made clear here is that cities may enact policies prohibiting commercial use of land designated for residential use. So this is sort of a short-term rental or Airbnb policies. And then, the last, I think, major substantive provision of this new section of the Government Code is this series of requirements saying that the cities may not approve housing projects that will demolish more units than they will create. And also can't approve a project that will require demolition of occupied or vacant protected units unless certain findings can be made, including that all of those units will be replaced and relocation benefits provided, et cetera. Again, this new section does not make any changes to SEQA or the Coastal Act. So turning now to density bonus law, and here Caitlin and I will be handing the baton back and forth for this next series of slides. But just at a very high level, state density bonus law basically functions by providing certain incentives and other benefits to housing developers who, in exchange for provision of affordable housing and other qualifying housing. And so the benefits and incentives that are provided are an increase in density, certain number of what are called incentives or concessions. We're going to get into all these in detail. This is just a quick summary. There are waivers of development standards, and then there are parking standards as well. So these are the four kind of carrots that the state legislature requires local governments to provide in exchange for the provision of affordable housing. And in general, the state law contains and establishes these standards. Local jurisdictions provide specific procedures for implementing the state standards. And in Cupertino, your density bonus ordinance is in Chapter 19.56 of the municipal code.
Great. So what does an applicant have to do in order to qualify for these density bonus benefits? In general, applicants will qualify by providing a certain minimum percentage of affordable housing for either lower-income or very low-income households. They can also qualify by providing a senior citizen housing development, and the units in the senior citizen housing development do not need to be affordable. There are also a couple of other ways an applicant can qualify that are less frequently used but still available. Also, the 2019 legislature has now provided a super-density bonus for 100% affordable projects. And we'll talk more about some of the super-density bonus benefits that are available to projects that provide 100% affordable housing. So what is a density bonus? A density bonus is going to be an increase over the otherwise maximum allowable density on a site. And the amount you're allowed to increase above the max density is going to be based on the type and amount of qualifying housing that you are proposing to provide. An applicant can select only one bonus. I wanted to touch on two terms that I'm going to be using: base units and density bonus units. So base units are the amount of units that would otherwise be allowed on the site if the project wasn't a density bonus project. Whereas when I say density bonus units, I'm talking about the additional units that applicants can construct because they are providing the minimum percentage of affordable housing or a senior citizen housing development. And I want to be clear that these density bonus units do not have to be affordable. They are a carrot in that the applicant can build market rate, additional market rate units, because they are providing affordable housing or other eligible housing. So the state statute includes the specific density bonuses for each type of qualifying housing. And they are provided in tables or in other sections of the statutes. I just wanted to walk through one example when an applicant is providing very low-income units. So let's say we have a project with a base number of 100 units. If that applicant provides five very low-income units, they get a 20% density bonus. So they can provide, they can build up to 20 extra density bonus units for a project total of 120 units. And you'll note that the more very low-income units that the applicant is providing, the greater density bonus that they get. So they, in a 100-unit base project, they could have 30, up to 35 additional units as a density bonus.
And the next slide just shows how very low, median, and moderate income levels are determined. And this is part of state law. Actually, you have to follow kind of a trail of various statutes to arrive at these percentages, but this is how these income levels are calculated. And the next slide is showing in actual numbers for one example of these income levels. So you'll see in the left column, we have listed the income categories: very low, low, median, and moderate. And then in the far right category, it notes that this is the income limit for a four-person household. The income limit changes depending on how many people are in the household. So according to this table, a very low-income household of four people would have a maximum income of $73,150, which is up to 50% of the area median income.
Density increase. Applicants are also eligible for incentives and concessions. And incentives and concessions are available if they result in identifiable and actual cost reductions in the cost of affordable housing. And these can be things like a reduction in site development standards, approval of mixed-use zoning, or other regulatory incentives or concessions either proposed by the applicant or by the city. It's, I wanted to note that the city is not required to waive fees as a concession or incentive, but it may at its sole discretion. An example of an incentive or concession might be if the city had a specific requirement that 50% of a project site be developed with commercial retail. And the applicant could show that reducing that percentage to, say, 25% commercial retail and 75% housing would result in identifiable and actual cost reductions. The city would have to grant that incentive or concession unless it could make specific findings. The number of incentives and concessions that are available to applicants are limited, and they are based on the amount of, or the percent of low-income, very-low-income, or moderate income housing that applicant is proposing to provide. The super density bonus added the ability for an applicant to get up to four concessions if they are providing a hundred percent of the units for low income, except there's a carve out, and they are allowed to devote twenty percent of those units for moderate income households. But for the most part, the, you'll see projects requesting one, two, or three incentives or concessions, depending on how much affordable housing they are providing. Density bonus developments are also eligible for waivers. So the state law says that the cities are prohibited from enforcing any development standards that physically preclude the construction of a density bonus development at the densities or with the concessions or incentives permitted. Unlike concessions or incentives, these are not limited in number. The only question is whether application of this, of a development standard would physically preclude the development. And the waivers are allowed for both the development and its amenities. We have one court of appeals decision in Woolmer versus City of Berkeley where the city granted waivers, and a petitioner sued and argued that if the project had been stripped of its amenities, including things like open space and higher ceilings, the project itself could have actually fit within the city's development standards, and the city had gone outside of its ability and should have denied the project and its waivers. And the court found that if the city had denied the project, it would have been a violation of state law, because state law does not require a project to be stripped of amenities. And granting the waivers was the right call in that situation. Density bonus developments are also eligible for reduced parking standards or ratios. And the statute says that the city is not allowed to impose any parking standards that exceed the ratios you'll see on the slide. So for example, for studios in one bedroom units, the city can only require up to one onsite parking space per unit. And in some cases, depending on the type of development, the city may not impose any parking requirements. And this is only for very specific types of development, including if it's a hundred percent lower income and all rental, or if it's a special needs housing development or supportive housing development.
So we thought it would be helpful to just run through a very simple hypothetical application of these rules since it is, appears to be fairly complicated analysis in the statute. And I apologize, our hypothetical is going to be kind of spread over a couple of slides here, so bear with us. But so in this hypothetical situation, you have a one acre site with a density of twenty dwelling units per acre, so that's the maximum density that would be allowed under a jurisdiction's regulations or code. So applying that math, for this one acre site, the maximum number of units that could be built is twenty units. Now, if an applicant comes in and proposes to build three very low income and two low income units out of those twenty, that would qualify it for a density bonus. As we show on the slide, that's fifteen percent very low income and ten percent low income. What they would qualify for in terms of the density bonus is a thirty five percent bonus, so that would be an increase over the twenty units that are allowed by the code. So thirty five percent equals seven additional units, and therefore, the total number of units that would be allowed as a result of this state mandate would be twenty seven units. In addition to the density bonus, in addition to those seven additional units, the applicant would also get three incentives or concessions. And then, of course, as Caitlin explained, any waiver that is necessary to ensure that the proposal physically can be built. And then also a reduction in parking standards that are available. And we'll note that this provision of these affordable units could also satisfy the city's inclusionary requirements. For the project, this is not, we're not going into great detail about the city's inclusionary program. However, I believe we have some Cupertino planners who are joining us tonight, who might be able to answer more detailed questions about how that, how that program works. But here, the inclusionary requirements for a project of this size would be fifteen percent below market rate units with a ratio of sixty percent of those units for very low income households and forty percent for low income households.
All right, so we were also asked to look at approaches by two other jurisdictions. I'm going to talk about Berkeley first. And we got the question, why and how does Berkeley require basically a base project submission for projects? Berkeley asks that applicants submit both the base project that just shows the development of the base number of units and the density bonus application that shows the development of all the units, base units and density bonus units. And this requires us to get a little bit into the weeds on how density is based in other jurisdictions. So taking a step back, in Cupertino, like in Winter's example, the density was based as of twenty dwelling units per acre, so a number of units in, can fit in an acre. So an applicant knows how many base units they are allowed on a project site, because they know the size of the project and the size of the site. On the other hand, Berkeley density is form based, so they don't have a specific number that an applicant knows going in. And instead, they just have building envelopes that's based on height, number of stories, setbacks, slope lines, those type of development standards. So in order to figure out how much density an applicant, how much of a density bonus an applicant is eligible for, they require applicants to show how much density could be built within a permitted building envelope on a site. The other jurisdiction we were asked to look at, and we're very pleased to have with us, as Winter mentioned, Kate and Carly from San Francisco to San Francisco planners. San Francisco requires a base project study for projects in form based zones. And this base project study has applicants figure out the base amount of residential square footage rather than units that would be allowed in a, the form based zone. San Francisco does not require a base project study in zones where density is specified. San Francisco additionally, waivers are generally for additional density. And San Francisco also offers a number of additional programs and incentives, including streamlining for affordable housing that go above and beyond the state density bonus law. And the planners are also happy to talk about those programs. So that wraps up our presentation, and we'll turn now to questions.
Okay, so before we go to questions by the city council and the planning commission, we want to open this up to the public for if anyone has submitted or wants to speak for their three minutes on this. So the attendees know how to raise their hand. I see Jennifer has raised her hand. So Jennifer, I'm going to time you, so you won't see the timer. I guess I could hold it up, but I'll let you know when the time, when you have thirty seconds left. So welcome, Jennifer.
Oh, hello, can you hear me? This is Jennifer.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. This is a very, Bill Mitchell did a fantastic job of getting me on Zoom. He did, he was very patient. Anyway, this was a very, very interesting presentation. The housing laws that have been passed in the last two years have taken a lot of time for the public to understand and comprehend. I appreciate everyone that is there today that is trying to explain these to us. I will say personally that when I was reading the density bonus law information, I found the text to be extremely written in a hostile demeanor for the public. It was written very dictatorially. It was very derogatory to the public, and I found it offensive and demeaning. I know that there are laws that have been passed for the housing in California, but I, as a member of the public, find the wording and tone used in the density bonus law to be extremely offensive. And I feel like that something is very wrong, where the public is being treated like small children that were in a conquered country. I, I think that there are a lot of problems we need to work out, but I don't feel comfortable that we are in a democratic state in California. Then again, going back to the very nice presentation that the, that you all presented, we have had a great deal of confusion over the how the density bonus law, how it wound up, what it's doing, what it's doing to our city, et cetera. I'm glad that everyone is trying to explain it. I will say that I am, under no conditions do I want parking reduced in Cupertino. Now, how we, how the public conveys that to the state, I don't know, especially with the hostile demeanor from some of these housing bills. But my stand has always been, I do not want to live in a city that has reduced parking. And I find it when, I know that was written in the law, but why are they saying that low income people shouldn't have cars?
Twenty seconds.
I find that that was in the housing, in the density bonus. How much more time do I have?
Ten seconds now.
Okay. Also, what about Parkland? I'm not a fan of form based code, and then I find that it sounds like all of these laws are incentivizing developers over the democracy of the public in the state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Did anyone else want to speak? I don't see anyone else with their hands raised.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would
Sure.
Wanted to remind anyone who are waiting to speak and they're on the phone, audio only, please press star nine to raise your hand. And I don't have any email comments currently for this item.
One, one comment.
Okay, wait, wait, John, John, hold on before we, I want to make sure no one else from the public has their hand raised. Okay, so now we can go back to the planning commission and city council.
This was an operational question, Mayor.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was hardly able to hear the resident, and I have both volume controls on max. You and the, and the staff are bear, are audible, but still not up all that loud, such that I have my settings on max. So maybe Bill Mitchell can raise the volume so we can put our volume levels down such that we can adjust it, because I have no adjustment. It has to be full max, or I don't hear.
Okay, so you're in the audio settings of Zoom or the audio settings of your computer?
Both, both, and they're both maxed out.
Huh, because I can hear you fine, I could hear Jennifer fine. Is anybody else having a problem? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I did just receive an email from Peggy Griffin.
Okay, would you like to read that?
It appears that it's a question, so.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Is the city allowed to request a project move buildings around, i.e. to another side of the land?
Okay, that's a question for one of the attorneys, I guess.
And could I just ask for clarification, is the city allowed to request that a project move buildings?
Or require?
It was, is the city allowed to request a project move buildings around, i.e. to another side of the land?
So as Caitlin noted when she was doing her presentation on this concept of waivers, and I'm going to assume that this is a reference to a project that qualifies for a density bonus, so it was providing some of the requisite affordable or other qualifying projects. What we have is there's a, one court of appeal case that analyzed sort of a similar argument that was made by a petitioner, which is that in that case, the city should have requested changes to the project rather than waive development standards. And in that case, what the court of appeals said was no, that, that an eligible density bonus project can include amenities, and that if it's eligible for a waiver of development standards, in that case, it was a height standard in addition to some other standards, the city was acting in accordance with state law by granting the waiver. So it's always a little bit hard to answer this type of hypothetical question, because I know there are lots of facts and factors that can come into play as, as a planning department is processing these. But in general, I think what the, what the law shows is that cities, you know, if there's a qualifying project and it needs a waiver to physically be developed on the site, that cities are required to grant those waivers to allow the physical development. I don't know if Caitlin, do you have anything more to add on that?
I think the city is still certainly able to work with the applicant. I think the question was, we were answering more the required side of things, but the city can certainly continue to request and work collaboratively with the applicant to develop a project that is a project that's, the community is excited about.
Okay, thank you. So we have about twenty eight minutes left before the city council meeting, so let's bring it back to planning commission and city council. You can raise your hand, and please be succinct, no speeches, just ask your question. Does anybody want to raise their hand here? Okay, wow, nobody. Oh, there we go, okay, where was that? Okay, walk, go ahead, Ray.
I have a question about what the public health exceptions are, and this is just coming from a lot of comments from the residents, where they've been asking about density and density and pandemics, right? So is there a point where someone would say, and not necessarily in this city, but in some other cities, like San Francisco or San Jose or LA, where hypothetical would be, maybe we do have to reduce density to reduce, you know, transmission or the ability of having, you know, very, very infectious diseases? And that might be a design element that might go forward in the future. So just curious if anyone's ever looked at that from a public health point of view.
Thanks, yeah. I'm not aware of any cases discussing this. My only comment in response is that I think cities and counties are kind of used in the, in the land regulation context, getting a lot of deference from courts in terms of the findings that they make. And in these housing statutes, the legislature has reined that in a little bit. So when, if a city were to make a finding that, for example, that this, a very dense project, and it could be in the context of density bonus, or the Housing Accountability Act also has this specific public health and safety finding that's required, that there would be particularly there would be particular public health and safety risks, for example, associated with density in a pandemic, the city would have to support that with a preponderance of evidence. So it's not just substantial evidence, it would actually have to be a convincing amount of evidence. And I would also just note that these statutes have some pretty onerous standards if the city's decision is challenged. So there are fees, attorney's fees, and potentially fines that are associated for not backing up these findings. And in the context of the density bonus statute, it's interesting the way that the statute is written, it's, a city can really only make this public health and safety finding when it's making a determination about waivers and incentives and concessions. And so the law is clear that you're not required to waive standards if doing so would have a specific adverse public health or safety impact. But again, you're going to be subject to this kind of higher evidentiary standard than perhaps you're used to.
Okay, thank you. Next is Kitty Moore, followed by David Fung. Welcome, Kitty.
Okay, so I have a question regarding the health and safety issue as well. Looking at Sierra Club versus the County of Fresno, I don't know if you've had a chance to look into that, but say we had a situation where we had surpassed the criteria air pollutants for our region and that showed up in an EIR, and so we are above the threshold limits. And previously in an EIR, you would only say, for instance, that ozone would cause respiratory symptoms, but now they need to, in an EIR, connect that with actual quantifiable health and safety impacts. So my question is, you know, have you looked at that particular case and, you know, where do you see that going? So in case we have projects which exceed these thresholds that we have for the region.
Yeah, I think it's a great question. So CEQA still applies and the city has that tool in its pocket in terms of CEQA compliance and requiring mitigation. And so that case is a CEQA case, as you pointed out. Obviously, there are some state housing laws like SB 35 that have streamlined particular projects in a way that basically provides an exemption from CEQA. But if we're putting those sort of to the side and just talking about a regular housing project that's not subject to that streamlining, nothing in the Housing Accountability Act or the density bonus law in any way affects the city's ability to require the mitigation that's, and the analysis that's discussed in that case.
Okay, thank you, David.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. It was good, it was clear. One thing that I would comment on, I think that, of course, these laws are all, you know, change over time, but I would, and you had commented that the Housing Accountability Act dated back to the 1980s. I would also comment that the density bonus law is also a 1980s law. So these are longstanding, you know, parts of the state legislative actions. The other thing I wanted to just comment on, we received the presentation shortly before this meeting tonight, the commissioners did, and I think even as of the time when we started, it was not available to the public, which I think is unfortunate. I realize that we, you know, these are trying times in terms of notification and making sure that the communications are available out there, but this is one area in particular, even in times before this, I think there have been issues raised where staff presentations were not ready at the time when the agenda was released. And I think particularly in times like this where it's difficult to, where it's harder for us to communicate in the ways we normally would, I think it's probably even a little more important that there be a greater effort to try and make sure that the, you know, presentation or the supplemental materials are available to the public so that they have a chance to take a look at things. On one hand, the packet that we got was very complete, you know, 55 pages, the original packet with 55 pages of the actual legislation. That would be very difficult for most people to draw meaningful conclusions from. So I would just say, you know, as a public issue, it's difficult, but if we can make a greater effort to make those available, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, council member Chow.
I'm mute, okay. Hi, yeah, I agree with David's comment that it would be nice if the presentations were available, and also I think the staff report has only one PDF with a tongue of government code. But then I would have wished for this study session to provide, for example, there are density bonus laws described, she is written, but those should have been made available so that the public has something that's more.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Councilmember Chow. All right, thank you. All right, anyway. Are you done? Yeah, we can hear you barely. Are you done? We have, we only have 10 minutes or 20 minutes. We have a bunch of questions here. Okay, before we go back to Kitty who has a hand up, her hand up, I had a question. It regards upzoning and downzoning.
Okay.
Excuse me, can we mute you?
Sorry.
So in defining upzoning and downzoning, because we've had this issue in our city when we're rezoning from one use to another, and one person may say it's upzoning, may, one person says it's downzoning, one person says it's just rezoning. And I know that last year, the city rezoned some land from retail to residential because HCD sent us a letter saying that we better do that in case SB 35 project didn't get built. And so we did it quickly after the HCD letter came, and the property owner objected stating that our rezoning was downzoning. So how do you define this upzoning and downzoning?
Yeah, I think you really hit on it. This is going to be very challenging to implement. I mean, I think the overarching goal of that provision is to ensure that there remains the same net capacity for residential development across the jurisdiction. But I think that that is a very broad brush requirement, and as I mentioned in the presentation, I think it's going to be challenging to figure out, to sort of quantify what any given change to a development standard might do in terms of residential capacity. And my best advice on that from a public agency perspective is just do your best and provide as much evidence in support of it as you can, because, you know, when you think about things like changes in parking standards, for example, does that have an impact on intensity or density of use? The other advice that, or the other suggestion that I think cities and counties are thinking about is to really make sure when you are doing, and what would be considered by you an upzoning, take advantage of that, do your, to the extent possible, upzoning and downzoning together. But that will present its own logistical challenges when there's environmental review and timing and different applicants. So I think you're right to be concerned about it, and in particular, the sort of differing views on what is upzoning and downzoning.
All right, thank you. Next up, Vice Mayor Paul.
Three questions. My first one is, can you just explain briefly for the benefit of public consumption, the distinction, if any, between incentives, concessions, waivers, and reductions of standards for the sake of the density bonus law?
Caitlin, did you want to field that, or would you like me to take it?
Sure. So waivers are granted when they, when requiring development standards would physically preclude the project. And this gets a little confusing because concessions and incentives can also reduce development standards. But concessions and incentives have to be specifically related to the provision of affordable housing and making that provision financially feasible. So it's two different showings that the applicant has to make, and I recognize both are related or can be related to development standards.
Okay, and then with waivers or reductions of standards, those do not need to be related to affordable housing then? Is that what you mean?
The waivers are available for the development to develop at the densities and with the concessions or incentives that the applicant has requested and is eligible for.
Okay, I think that sets up a good backdrop to my other questions. My second question has to do with the degree of the waiver. So let's say a developer wants to build a relatively sizable average square feet of units. Is there a maximum, for example, that an applicant can be, you know, required to be able to insist upon as an average size of the units? Or how do you, how do you keep that in check? Because if the claim is, well, I need at least this much height in order to get all my units in, and the average unit size is, I mean, just preposterously like 3,000 square feet, for instance, in a condo complex, I mean, what are the laws of waivers in that type of context?
I think this would be a great one to ask the San Francisco planners who we have here, who I know have a lot of experience with us, if they're still on and willing to participate at this point.
Sure, thank you. Hi, Mr. Vice Mayor, my name's Carly. I'm a senior planner in San Francisco. We have run into a couple of requested waivers that I think you are kind of categorizing as something that may be a little above and beyond what we would consider maybe something to accommodate normal density. And we work within two different types of zoning districts, you know, form-based districts and districts that have an established density as a set number of units. In form-based districts, I think we are able to identify these waivers potentially, you know, one of the examples that I often rely on is that we have a skyscraper that's going taller instead of out and using the development potential that they would otherwise use in the podium in order to achieve a much taller and thinner building. And so we, initially, they came in and asked for a height waiver, and we said that we would characterize that as an incentive. And, you know, this is something that if you, if you think that a 3,000 square foot condominium may actually command a higher price or help offset the cost of affordable housing, we found that that is something that we would look more critically at as potentially as an incentive instead of a waiver. And it's very hard to create a set of criteria around when we find that, and it's almost a kind of we know it when we see it. In terms of the density districts that have a per-unit density control, you know, we have a little bit less of the opportunity to say that you, you know, we would still take the same approach to say these units are very large, you would actually be able to potentially, you know, fit this within a certain building envelope. It maybe seems like you're overestimating your building envelope. However, we do also have the added benefit of the construction type in many of those districts. It's very, very expensive for our developers to go anywhere over eight stories. And so the underlying zoning districts that are often the, those that establish a density as a ratio of units to lot area are in those zoning districts where there's also lower height limits to begin with. And so we find that the combination of those two things is a kind of a critical eye to that waiver and the potential to ask for an incentive, while also coupling that with the construction type has really curbed a lot of those more outlandish requests.
Great info, thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay, Darcy, we have four, we have four other questions.
Can I please just ask this last one very quickly? So with regard to being able to waiver, reduce the development standard, a city or county is not required to do so under at least four categories of reasons. One is health or safety, another is environmental problems, another is harming historical property. And the last one is the one that I want to ask about, it's a category described as being contrary to law. What laws are being referred to here? Because this is essentially a circumvention of laws that are in place at the moment. And so are we talking about state laws or other city laws? Or what law is being referred to in this category of being able to deny a potential type of waiver?
So that category is specifically for state or federal law, contrary to state or federal law. And to my knowledge, there's no cases interpreting what state or federal law might give a reason for denying a waiver or a concession.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Vikram, you were next. Welcome.
Does the law make any difference between, say, an urban setting with mass transit and a suburban setting that doesn't have much of mass transit and parking is almost a necessity for, even for the lower-income units?
Are you referring to the context of the density bonus?
Yes, the fact that you may not need to provide parking for very low income.
Yeah, there's not a distinction in terms of urban versus not urban. So the parking standards just are what they are in the statute. There is, as Caitlin mentioned, this new provision that deals with this super-density projects, which are 100% affordable projects, that if they are placed near transit stops, actually, there can be no imposition of parking requirements for those. And I think the logic behind that is that they are accessible to transit. But otherwise, the state statute is basically applicable to any of these qualifying density bonus projects anywhere in the state.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, you haven't called yet. Go ahead.
Okay, so my question is relative to senior housing versus the BRM housing. If the senior housing doesn't require any reduction in affordability, then how does that play in your 27 or 20 unit going to 27 unit? One had, the applicant proposes three very low-income unit to low-income unit. How do you adjust those numbers when it's a senior housing project? That's the first part of the question.
Yeah, great question. So it's sort of a different calculation for senior projects. If you have the PowerPoint presentation and can go back to the slide that talks about all the different kinds of housing that would make you eligible, a senior housing project is sort of its own separate category, and there you get just a flat, and Caitlin can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you just get a flat 20% increase in the number of units based on the number of senior units that you are providing. So it's a little bit different calculation for a senior project.
So then the second part of that question, and it pertains to both BMR and senior units, how does it get enforced and how long do the units have to, does the developer have to keep those units at those designated levels for senior housing? Meaning, what if after a year or two, the senior housing is allowed to just be no age restriction requirements, low-market units, if they're not checking income levels to make sure? make sure? How is that enforced? Who does the enforcement? What are the penalties?
So I don't know if Caitlin wants to field this one. There are, of course, requirements for how long, for example, an affordable rental unit would need to remain affordable or an ownership unit. Cupertino also, in its inclusionary ordinance, has its own requirements for the duration of affordability. And in terms of implementing it and enforcing it, I think there are a number of different ways that cities can do it. And I believe we have folks from the planning, your own planning department, who are involved in that kind of implementation. I don't know if they would like to weigh in on enforcement and implementation.
I think we can take that offline. We only have four minutes and we have two more questions. But I know there, you know, we can get with John about the enforcement, because I know there are enforcement provisions, and we have had to do that in the past when some project owners were violating those provisions. So let's go to Kitty, and then last is Liang. So please be brief, we only have a few minutes.
Okay, I just want to make a statement that we're relying pretty heavily on Walmer versus Berkeley, and that particular project could be quite distinguishable from ones that we would be looking at. And so I don't want us to feel like we're completely led to believe that all waivers are acceptable. I think that if we have a project where you need to, where you need to reduce density, I think it becomes rather confusing if you have a mixed-use project with office and residential, what part of the project you would be reducing. With regards to BMR requirements, this is kind of a staff question. So we have City Council Resolution 15-037, which is our BMR manual. And in it, we require, for instance, the number of bedrooms to be the same in the BMR units as in the market rate units. So I would like it to be explained, you know, how is it that a developer could turn around and take those requirements which enabled them to qualify for density bonus units to turn around and then take those away as a concession? So to me, it's like you have this requirement, you have to meet it, and you can't take it as a concession. Could someone explain how that is allowed to happen? And then offline, I would like to have a list of all of the health and safety requirements. You know, is it noise, air quality, greenhouse gases, those types of things, which when we're looking at an EIR and they can't mitigate, are those automatic disqualifiers for having a density bonus? So going back, it's my question really is on the BMR requirement. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Pugh-Gosh Planning Manager.
Hi.
If you would permit me to answer that.
Sure, okay.
With regard to the reduction of square footage, we have allowed that with one particular project, and that was at the advice of our attorneys, because at that time, state law allowed the developer to ask for that as an incentive and concession. I believe since then, state law has been clarified to ensure that that not be requested as an incentive or a concession. And I'm sure the city attorney's office might have more to add to that.
Great, thank you. So now the last question is Councilmember Chow, welcome.
You hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So this is a question for San Francisco planners and to follow up to what Darcy asked. I think the state law, it's clear that they are not allowing a limited number of reduction of standards. Therefore, there is a strict restriction for conditions that they to qualify for one concession, two concessions, three and four, at most four. And for waivers, there is unlimited waivers. Therefore, the requirement for waivers would be very different. So I'm wondering, for San Francisco, what exactly are you seeing to justify a waiver? What exactly are you requiring? Can you give an example? Your answer said that you are trying to ask them to use concession. But then for those who are qualified for waiver, exactly what? And another question is, you mentioned there is some district with units per acre, and their height limit is maybe 80 feet. I think I read somewhere that you allow at most 20 feet extra height for that district. So you don't actually allow doubling the height for, so what kind of waiver would be allowed for height for that district? Thank you.
So that's, I'll answer those in order. When we're asking for the sort of justification of a waiver, we often do, we ask the project architects to provide a diagrammatic series of, series of diagrams to show how they are asking for waivers from development standards in order to accommodate extra density. And so often, that could manifest as a diagram to show the 35% extra density accommodated as a height waiver. Maybe they're taking some relief from setbacks around the sides and the rear of the property. And so we ask the architect to really be very specific and very detailed about how much of a reduction in the development standards that they're requesting. And then similarly with incentives, we ask for a narrative and a financial, a financial package to demonstrate that there are cost reductions and that they're offsetting the cost of affordable housing. For the projects that are located in districts that have a density that's established as a number of units to lot area, we have a local density bonus program. It's called Home SF. And the goal of this program was to provide a local alternative to the state density bonus program, where we don't have as much control over what incentive someone wants or what waivers someone wants. So we've set forth a series of development bonuses that a project sponsor can seek. And they can seek up to two extra stories of height. And the amount of height that you ask for is also related to the amount of affordability you provide. And so similarly to the state density bonus, if you provide greater affordability, you get a larger building envelope. And that two extra stories is also coupled with the provision of form-based density instead of a number of units. And then there are certain modifications from our development standards. The reference to 80 feet in height was more of a reference to some of the other constraints that a project is subject to. And the specific constraint is construction type. And when you go above 80 feet in height, you get into high-rise construction, which can be much more expensive and very difficult for a developer to make pencil.
Great, thank you. So we're at 6:47, we're two minutes over. So I will adjourn the study session, and let's take a one-minute break, and then we will go into the city council, the regular city council meeting. Thank you, everybody. We will not do the pledge of allegiance, but I will ask the city clerk to conduct the roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Sinks.
Here. Here, it wasn't muted, okay.
Councilmember Sinks. Councilmember Willie.
Here. I'm here.
Okay, Councilmember Sinks is here, and Councilmember Willie is here. Vice Mayor Paul.
I'm here.
Mayor Sharp.
Here. Okay, so we are on to postponements. I would like to postpone item 10 on the agenda, the emergency assistance funds for tenants at risk of eviction due to impacts of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. The reason is, multiple reasons. First, because of the eviction protections enacted by both the city and county and state, there's, I'm sorry, by the county and state, there are no immediate risk of any evictions. And we have sufficient time to create a program that will serve the maximum number of residents. And the other reason, later this week, I will be in a teleconference with the mayors of four other West Valley cities to discuss how we can come together to fund a rental assistance program. And the situation is evolving in terms of the assistance we can expect from the county, state, and federal governments, both in direct-to-renter aid and aid to cities. We don't know how much money we'll have available yet for such a program. And also, based on the feedback from the city council at the last meeting, we want to create a program that will assist the largest number of at-risk families and individuals possible, where all the multiple parties are contributing. And the city manager is currently looking into how to structure an assistance plan that would do this. So because of those reasons, and we are in conversation with organizations outside the city, both nonprofits and for-profit, to see who can assist us in administering a rental assistance program with the least administrative costs, so the maximum amount of money can go to the affected renters. So Madam City Attorney, do I need a vote to do a postponement, or how does this work?
You could check if there's consensus, and if anyone objects, I would recommend a vote.
Okay. Does anyone object to postponing this item? Speak now, I will unmute everybody. Great. Madam City Manager, when do you, I have the meeting later this week with the other mayors. When do you think you'll have answers from outside entities as to if they can help us with administration?
I think I may have something to report before, on or before, the next council meeting, the 21st. I just had another meeting today with another financial organization. So I'm really having a ongoing conversation with two right now. And then the other two that we talked about, one has not started and the other one never went anywhere. So I can certainly keep you all updated if things progress differently than that, but that's kind of the situation.
All right, very good. So that item, see, no objections, we'll postpone that item.
I have a question. Sorry. So I think it's great that we are cooperating with multiple agencies and companies. However, I thought the intent originally was to get some money available for West Valley Community Services as soon as possible. Now it will be delayed to 21st? Are there immediate need from West Valley? Just wondering.
Well, because of the eviction protection, no one is being evicted right now. It is true that some people may be falling behind on rent, but there's no evictions happening.
The assistant was also because they said they have to buy, purchase food instead of relying on food donation, and there are maybe other utilities.
No, the city managers talked to them about that, and that's not a requirement.
Before we discuss.
Right, and we can't discuss this anyway, because, because we're postponing it.
Okay.
But the city manager can talk to you offline and your one-on-one about this.
We are talking on the postponement, so I'd like to know, would there be impact to them because of the postponement? And I want a confirmation that there is no impact to West Valley.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are on, there are no ceremonial matters in presentations. We are on to oral communications. Madam City Clerk, do we have any emails for you to read? And is anyone raising, I see one attendee has raised their hand. But before we go to the attendees, do you have any emails?
I have not received any emails. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I think Councilman Chow simply asked for the city manager to confirm that West Valley Community Services is not in imminent danger of running out of their own funds, so that we can determine whether we need to keep this on versus postpone. Just let the city manager tell us what she knows about West Valley Community Services' current need.
Okay, well, I think she can, she can do that during the COVID-19 update, if that's okay.
I'm happy to do it in either place.
So let's go to oral communications. I have two people with their hands raised here. First is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie, you have three minutes. I will unmute you. Okay.
Manager.
I will unmute you again. Okay, Connie, for some reason, I can't unmute you.
I'll try. How's this?
Okay, there, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for their service during this time. And I will express my disappointment that the rest, that the money is being put off until next week. However, rather than speak to that issue specifically, I did write my note to all of you, and you understand where I am coming from, because I do believe there are people who may misunderstand, there may be people who get evicted in spite of everything, and that our West Valley organization is best equipped to help them, because they know our community. But again, I want to just say that I'm going to use my time tonight to ask you and all who are watching online to give generously to those who are serving our neighbors and friends who are in fear of losing their income or their homes or both, and also for those who serve homeless neighbors, many of whom have nowhere to shelter in place. West Valley Community Services is located in Cupertino and provides those services to our Cupertino friends and neighbors. I am a regular donor to West Valley Community Services myself, and I know their work. Can you make a commitment tonight to click on the link in your browser and give generously? And Kirsten, I did send an email with that, with that website in it, if you would, could put it up, and then I will also read it out loud. It is HTTPS colon backslash backslash www.wvcommunitieservices.org backslash donate-dash-now-dash-covid19. Covid-19 does not have a dash. Did you, did you find that, Kirsten, to put up?
Sorry, I got it a bit late, but here, I'll share it right now.
And let me just point out, all you have to really type is wvc.org, and then you can find the donate link on that website.
Well, that is true. This particular one I gave will take you directly to it, which is sometimes a little easier. And I meant just the website, not the, not the, not the thing itself, but the website, because you can type in lots of different ways. I've done this, so I know that putting in the, this specific one is very helpful. It's HTTPS colon backslash backslash www.wvcommunitieservices.org backslash donate-dash-now-dash-covid19, with no breaks, in the COVID-19. So. So yes, I understand that there are other ways to do it, and I thank you, Mayor, for that. And again, I look forward to next week, then, when we will be discussing the COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program.
Okay, thank you, Connie. Next, we are going to Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer.
Okay. Thank you. I hope everyone can hear me. This is Jennifer, and I had sent one email, which I think they possibly were going to put under oral, but I, you all don't need to read it, I'll just mention, there were several items. One thing is that there was, San Jose had a community meeting at Cypress Center last month that was, had to be canceled because of the pandemic, and it was going to be discussing the urban villages, and specifically the El Paseo Urban Village. There is a new project board from San Jose that was just erected at the Cato Shopping Center. It's a tiny strip mall directly across from El Paseo at the intersection of Lawrence and Saratoga Avenue. It went up over the weekend, and it looks like that's supposed to be a 10-story, I guess apartment complex tower, and it matches what they have projected for the opposite side of El Paseo, next to where the mattress store was. And I think that the Cypress Community Meeting was going to discuss issues with these two properties and these 10-story housing blocks. One of the issues is that I found out recently that Westgate West, Westgate and El Paseo are all composed of one urban village in San Jose, and we need to have discussions about what happens to that. I hope San Jose does not allow any projects to be pushed forward until the public can know what is going on. This is very, very important. The pandemic should not be used to conceal projects. I'm sure no one would do that, but it may be several weeks before the public can go to meetings about it. Also, we want to make sure we follow what's happening with SB 902 and SB 899 during the pandemic times. I believe the legislator is adjourned now until April 13th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. I don't see any more hands raised to speak. Madam City Clerk, and you have not received anything during this time, have you?
No further email comments, Mr. Mayor.
Great, okay. So we are on to item one, which is the city manager update on COVID-19 response efforts.
So what I'm going to probably do is talk about budget impacts and our recent furlough, and then I'll go right into the status of the Renters Assistance Program and the research that's kind of going on at the moment. Overall, we have an estimated reduction in revenues of 12%. That's at the top line. What that means is about $11 million. That's only projected through the end of this fiscal year, so to June 30th. So what I'm trying to do is divide fiscal years, because we're going to have to do some slightly different things for 2020 and 2021. Most of this is, or 38% of it, was a reduction in TOT. Makes perfect sense, because our hotels are not full with visitors. And the other, approximately 27%, is just a reduction in the charges that, for our services, so some of our fees. Overall, we made a reduction in expenditures of approximately 20%. Now, that might mean, might feel like an overkill based upon the 12% reduction in revenues. However, we felt this was probably judicious, because we'll take some of that savings and help 2021 with it, so the things don't have to be so very severe in 2021. Unfortunately, yesterday, I had to give notice to approximately 80 employees, plus or minus, largely part-time, largely people who could not do their work by telework, that they would be on furlough effective Monday, April 13th. Again, that one is for more of an effect, full-year effect in, of savings in 2021, not in 1920. The last thing I'll say about it in general is that the impact of expenditure reductions in this year and unassigned fund balance is estimated to be greater than what we've previously told council in mid-year, is an additional $11 million in order to help budget 2021. And I'm probably not going to go into any further detail right now, because those estimates are still moving around, which is why I'm not presenting 2021 just yet. But know that whatever we do in 2021, that I will report in my update on April 21st, will likely be our posture in planning for the recessionary budget for the next decade, just to be super conservative with the taxpayer dollars. So, you know, if we do recover and everything bounces back, and it wasn't something that would send us into a deep recession, then maybe we can recover and restore some things. But until we see that coming, this is probably the safest approach as we go into the next fiscal year. As I promised before, during our last work program discussion, once we have that kind of outlined, I'll come back to council and tell you how I think the work program is looking as a result of that. I will then move to the status on the Renters Assistance Program. The staff report that was polled had like a two-prong approach. Some of the discussions with West Valley Communities, I'm sorry, West Valley Cities, which the mayor and I will attend on Thursday, April 9th, is a little bit different than what we're doing with, what I'm doing with financial institutions. So the West Valley Cities are interested in developing a longer-term approach to supporting West Valley Community Services as a group of cities. Right now, almost all of them, not all of them, along with us, have a grant program that West Valley applies to every year. Some of them are on the same cycle, some of them are not, as ours. They have bearing amounts that I can provide a summary for, to council, and they, but they also have other nonprofits that they work with in their communities to support community members who need it. But this, this discussion is really about how we kind of strategize around our grant program, and then perhaps a lead discussion about renters' assistance in the form of no-interest loans, or something longer term that someone may have to use, you know, again, depending upon how long this pandemic lasts and our shelter-at-home order lasts, what we might do together on perhaps a loan program of a certain structure. On the other side, I'm still working with probably two out of the four financial institutions we've been discussing. In fact, today, I discussed the possibility of a no-interest structure with an organization called Earnin. It's an interesting tech, it's not a tech firm, it's a financial organization that is a software application that tends to do a little more structuring and support for people of low income, in anticipation that they would have a tougher time managing their dollars, because they're so scarce. And what was impressive about them is their average income, and they do serve the nation, they have 2 million current users, which is also impressive. Their average income ranges as low as $25,000 a year, all the way up to $75,000 a year. That's approximately 80% of their clients. So, you know, they understand the layout there for low-income people. The other thing that was interesting that I would come back to council and ask about is they could actually have, help West Valley right away. They can go to West, I can connect them, and they can talk to West Valley about supporting any clients, could be in Cupertino, could be any other city with needs on, you know, advances and salary advances, and that could be the structure that they work under. So that's my current update. It was supposed to be a, kind of a near-term discussion of rental assistance in the form of a grant. However, West Valley Community Services has received a commitment of $100,000 from Apple thus far. There are other businesses that we are currently asking to donate. And I will tell you that they said that they do not need food assistance at this time, that they are pretty good for the next 15 months or so. So I take them at their word on that, and what they are really needing right now is rental assistance.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's my, that's my summary.
Okay, so we do have one, one attendee that wishes to speak, and then we'll bring it back to council. And any other attendees, please raise your hand, but right now, we're, Sue Bose, welcome. Did, I'll unmute you again. Okay, Sue, are you there? Perhaps she did not, not want to talk. She had her hand raised. Okay. All right, so we'll bring it back to council with questions for the city man.
Mr. Mayor? I do have one, I do have one email comment.
Okay, well, no, go ahead.
From BG. Dear Councilmembers, I sent oral comments to the last council meeting inquiring the financial impact of COVID-19 to our city. Councilmember Liang Chao suggested to bring an item on the same, and the city replied that they will not be ready to bring financial impacts on April 7th, and did not provide any timeline on when the city will be ready to provide a report to this council and the public. However, I would like to bring to your attention that the City of San Jose had their council meeting today, and they had an agenda item on the budgetary impacts from COVID-19, and their approach on how those impacts will be addressed, and that fiscal year 2019, 2020, and fiscal year 2020, 2021, the city's finance department said they had, they expect financial crisis and shared the expectation revenue shortfalls this quarter and next fiscal year. For example, they expect a sales tax reduction of 45% for this quarter, among other revenue shortfalls. The City of San Jose plans to come back again at the end of April with another report to the city council on reducing existing expenditure appropriations for the remaining months of this fiscal year, and resolving revenue shortfalls for the next fiscal year. It was a very informative presentation and provides transparency on the city's finances, and I appreciate their proactive ability to share it to the public early on in this crisis. So my request again to the city manager and the council is to bring the financial impact of COVID-19 for the remaining months of this fiscal year and next fiscal year at the next council meeting. If a large city like San Jose can bring a presentation today, our city should be able to bring a report on the budgetary impacts as well. I have attached the City of San Jose's budget impact presentation for our council review. It is clear that we cannot maintain status quo and keep spending business as usual. It is the city's responsibility to be forthright in informing the public the financial stability of our city during the crisis and the steps the city plans to take to mitigate the impact. Thanks, BG Cupertino resident. I'll include this presentation in the written committee.
Okay, great. I see, John Willie, you have your hand raised. Welcome.
Yeah, just wanting to get a little bit more clarification and understanding on the furlough of the 80 employees. What's our city total head count currently?
Head count versus full-time equivalents?
Yeah, that's where the confusion comes in. The 80 that got furloughed, are those then counted two to one?
No.
And then we say-
They're part-time.
Kind of clarify.
I gave you a head count, not an FTE count.
So what is our current city head count?
Christina, do you have that off the top of your head? It's over 200, 200 and-
That's what I was thinking. And so these 80 part-time employees that were furloughed still leave us with the over 200 full-time equivalents?
No, you're mixing equivalents and head count. So full-time equivalent is 20 80 hours, so you could have two part-timers who are working half-time add up to one full-time equivalent. So I'm giving you head count, so let's keep it all head count, so we don't get-
Okay, head count.
Head count. I'm hoping that Christina has the total number, because I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's-
Yeah, Deb, can you hear me okay? So this is Christina Alfar, Director of Administrative Services for the City of Cupertino. As of the last payroll, we had 291 employees on our payroll, and as Deb mentioned, the furlough impacted 80 of those part-time employees.
So 291 minus 80 then, so we're still at 211?
We're still at, yeah, approximately 211, and that includes our current, I believe, FTE, our full-time benefit account is about 200 positions. So that would still leave about 11 part-time positions that weren't impacted.
Okay, and maybe one last just confirmation. So those were true city employees versus contract, so that those city employees now are able to go and get unemployment benefits?
Correct.
Great.
And so just to pull on that just a little bit, John, employees that are eligible for unemployment are the ones that I just furloughed, and anybody who has a reduction in hours of a certain amount. So I'm, and why I say furlough versus layoff, because furlough allows us to keep them attached to Cupertino on our roles. They're going to get paid out of unemployment, but it allows us to pull them back, should we not have to do anything too drastic in the future. So that's a good thing.
Does, does that also mean their medical benefits are also suspended?
Part-timers do not get medical benefits.
Oh, you're right. Thank you.
Okay, Liang.
You're still on mute, Liang.
You're still muted. I keep unmuting you, and you keep re-muting, okay?
Okay. So John asked my question, yes, so I, as I understand, the city will also help them fill out the forms-
Correct.
-so that they would get the benefits.
Correct.
Great, thank you. And I would like, there are multiple efforts on donation, like people are, there are efforts to get funding so that they can ship masks from China to here, and there are people who are making cotton fabric masks that's N95 compatible. Right here in Cupertino, they need volunteers also. So I wonder if the city can provide a website? Our website could provide some space for all this call for donation or call for volunteers, because I see Palo Alto website has something similar. Because people are reaching out to me, they want to reach out to a more general public. Can we include that, either in website and our daily updates?
We will take a look at that.
Okay, Rod.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I talked to Deb about this, this morning, and I understand why we're having to furlough our employees, but it's with deep regret, I think, that, that we have to do this at this time. And I, I hope that, yeah, I hope that we're able to, to re-engage those folks as, as soon as humanly possible, and if there's any flexibility in what people can do, if, if we find that there are tasks at hand that need to be done, perhaps some agreement can be reached with the union, and, and we can, at the earliest possible time, put these folks back on payroll. I mean, I do understand why a parts and rec team may be, some of them, folks may be furloughed, they're not providing service, these are taxpayer funds, I understand that, but I, I think that, you know, we ought to do everything we can reasonably do to accommodate our loyal workforce, and put them back to work at the earliest possible opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to mention one other thing that both Deb and I have contacted the county about. I have gotten emails from residents asking why Santa Clara County is not doing the same thing as the six Southern California counties, LA, Orange, Riverside, San Bernardino, Ventura, and San Diego. There, those counties are all reporting the number of cases per city in their counties. And for whatever reason, Santa Clara County is not doing that. And I have residents that are very concerned about this. They're at-risk residents and they would like to know where the major outbreaks are and are not. So we are hoping to get some response from the county. Hopefully they will provide that information and if not, hopefully they will tell us why they are choosing not to be as transparent as other areas. So Deb, have you received anything back from the county on this?
No, he, I was encouraged because he responded back to my email yesterday, but he did tell me it would take a little bit, maybe just a couple of days this week to get back to me. And as soon as I get it, I will forward it out.
Okay, very good. Let's see, there's no more hands raised. So let's go back to the agenda. We are on to report on committee assignments. Does anyone have any committee assignments that they attended since the last meeting a week ago? Is anyone raising their hand? Seeing, I think in two weeks we will have several because there's going to be a lot more meetings, teleconferences happening in the next two weeks. So seeing nothing there, we are on to the consent calendar. Did anybody wish to pull anything from consent? You can unmute yourself and if you want to. That's easier than me unmuting you. Okay, seeing nobody wanting to pull anything from consent, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar, items numbers three through eight.
Second, this is Rod.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rod. Can we have a roll call vote, please, by the city clerk?
Councilmember Chow.
Oh, yes. Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's see, I'm not muted. Okay, great. Okay, so we are on to item nine, the DeAnza Hotel project hearing items. This is the petition for reconsideration regarding the city council decision of March 3rd, 2020 to approve a new 155-room, seven-story hotel, 24-hour operations with underground parking, event meeting rooms, a ground-floor restaurant with separate bar and a rooftop lounge with separate bar by demolishing a commercial building with an area of 8,323 square feet. General plan amendments to amend table LU1 by increasing the development allocation of hotel rooms to 155 hotel rooms in the Homestead Special area and figure LU2 and policy LU23-point-two, adding figure LU5 to allow increased heights and reduced building plane within the North DeAnza Gateway to this development, development architectural and site approval and use permits. LU201802, EA201803, applicant John Vidovic, DeAnza Properties, location 10931 DeAnza Boulevard, assessor parcel number 32610061. And the first reading of a development agreement for a new 155-room, seven-story hotel, 24-hour operation with underground parking, event meeting rooms, a ground-floor restaurant with separate bar and a rooftop lounge with separate bar by demolishing a commercial building with 8,323 square feet, application number DA201801. Applicants John Vidovic, DeAnza Properties, location 10931 DeAnza Boulevard, assessor parcel number 32610-061. So do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, this is John Mark here with the City of Cupertino's planning department, senior planner here, and I'm going to present the staff report. So let me just, two seconds to share the screen. Do you guys all see that?
Nope.
No.
John, is the property owner online as well?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think he is. And attendees, if he's still there. Let's see, no, I don't. Oh, yeah, he's there. John is there.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. All right. All right, we all good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, again, thank you, Mayor Sharp, for the introduction. Again, this is for the DeAnza Hotel. We actually do have two items within this one, 9A and 9B. I will be presenting those concurrently. So again, the subject, as mentioned before, is a petition. 9A is a petition for reconsideration of the approval of the DeAnza Hotel and 9B is a first reading of the development agreement. Again, as before, the last hearing, we talked about where we are in the process. And again, we're at the city council level, as you can see by the red circle at the bottom left of the screen. So this is brought to city council on March 3rd, 2020. So a brief synopsis of what happened. So the first bullet talks about which project applications were approved by council. This is GPA, development permit, the architectural site approval, the use permit, and the environmental MND. And those were approved by 41, but with Willie voting no. Council hadn't voted. 32 was Sharp from Paul voting no to have the community development director renegotiate the development agreement to increase the amount of community amenity payment offered and to clarify the fees paid for the shuttle transportation amendment. So we'll start with 9A, and we have the reconsideration of the DeAnza Hotel. So the petition of reconsideration was submitted by Michael Lazo of Lazo Drury LP on behalf of Laborers International Union of North America, Local Union Number 270, which will be referred to throughout the presentation as LIUNA. And they submitted this on March 13th. So the City of Cupertino is unique in the fact that they give up, that we give a process via municipal code for reconsideration of city council decisions. And this chapter gives, contains procedures for the interested persons to petition the council to reconsider any item that, or any decision that is considered adjunctary. So there's five findings that the petitioner could have to, that could file petition for. They can file for all five of those findings or just one. So on this slide, I have the four, the first four, and and that is the offer of new relevant evidence, which could not have been produced any earlier city hearing, or an offer of relevant evidence, which wasn't properly excluded at any prior city hearing, or proof of facts, which demonstrates that the city council proceeded with that or in excess of its jurisdiction, or proof of facts, which demonstrate that the city council failed to provide a fair hearing. So the petitioner did not use any of these first four. However, the petitioner did base your petition on the fifth, which is proof of facts, which demonstrates that the city council abuses discretion by not proceeding in a manner required by law, rendering a decision which was not supported by findings of fact, and rendering a decision in which the findings of fact were not supported by the evidence. The staff report summarized the petitioner's comments into two. First was that the, that staff or that the city, that, excuse me, that there still is a fair argument that the project may have unmitigated adverse environmental impacts that the city is required to prepare an EIR, as you recall. That the city, the council had approved a mitigated negative declaration, MND, and that the city's response is that the city council proceeded in a matter required by law and based its decision on substantial evidence in the ISMND. Petitioner has not made a fair argument for reasons stated in the response to comments memos. I do want to point out that the city's consultant from Placeworks, Terry McCracken, is in attendance and can't answer any specific secret questions that rebuke any assertions made by the petitioner. And the second comments was that had, mostly with the city's handling of the noise analysis, the petitioner's noise expert concluded that the MND improperly analyzed construction noise levels and that construction noise levels during the five stages of project construction would create a significant noise impact. So the city's response is that the city council conducted the hearing in a manner required by law and rendered a decision based on established regulations in the Cupertino Municipal Code and the findings based on substantial evidence in the record. And that's all been attached to the staff report. 9B, and we'll come up with the staff's conclusions for 9A at the end of the presentation. 9B, the development agreement, DA201801, community benefits, as has been typical with the general plan amendment process, DA has been part of the application as it was with the Village Hotel. So a brief summary of the community benefits that are part of the DA, the amenity funding of $500,000, shuttle service for residents, meeting rooms allowed for the city and Cupertino Public Schools, rooftop amenity, which happened to be the seventh floor of the hotel and a minimum hotel standard. So again, at the March 3rd hearing, the community development director directed to renegotiate the DA to increase the amount of the community amenity payment from $500,000 to $1 million and clarify the fees paid for shuttle transportation to and from the DeAnza Hotel and regional airports and other significant destinations for city residents. No other non-hotel guests will not exceed 50% of the fees paid by hotel guests. The community development director did meet with Mr. John Vidovic between, right after the last hearing. The developer did decline to increase the community amenity payment. And again, the developer is in attendance, so he can explain better his position. It was presented to us that the, that the rooftop bar amenity as required by council would far exceed the $1 million asked at this time by council for the renegotiation. However, the developer wasn't amenable to amend the development agreement to include language to charge non-hotel guests' shuttle fee that does not exceed 50% of any hotel guests for the shuttle service. However, if the guests are not charged, neither will the hotel gas for the shuttle service. So in conclusion, staff's recommendation that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution number 20-1758, denying the petition, petition which does not meet the requirements of Cupertino Municipal Code, section 2.0, 2.08.096, and introduce ordinance number 20-2195, an ordinance of the city council. The City of Cupertino approving a development agreement for the development of a new seven-story, 155-room hotel with associated site landscaping improvements located at 10931 North DeAnza Boulevard. Any next steps if the first reading is done, if the first reading is conducted tonight? The next step would be for the city council to tentatively have this on the agenda for the April 21st, 2020 hearing for a second reading. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, I do see one attendee wishes to speak on this agenda item. Do you have any emails that you need to read into the record?
I have received no emails, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so before we go to the applicant, we will have welcome Paige Fenny.
Good evening. My name is Paige Fenny and I am here on behalf of LIUNA. Stated in our petition for reconsideration, we believe the city council has abused its discretion by not proceeding in a manner required by law. MNDs are reviewed under the fair argument standard, which we have met and an EIR is therefore required. By using the average noise level as the construction noise standard, the MND analysis enables construction to generate very high maximum noise levels that are not disclosed. Our noise expert, Derek Watry, calculated that the maximum noise levels for the various phases of the project and concluded that the project will have significant noise impacts during five stages of the project's construction. As reported in the MND, the property line of the Cupertino Hotel is 34 feet from the edge of the construction site, not 200 feet as the MND uses as the distance for measuring the project's noise levels. And this 34 feet is where the city's construction noise ordinance should apply. The typical noise levels table in Appendix C of the MND indicates that a noise level of 85 dBa is like a food blender at three feet away and a level of 95 dBa is like a lawn mower. These are very high noise levels and while they're not impact noises like a pile driver would be, they can fluctuate quickly as engines are revved to generate requisite power. The MND states that heavy equipment can have maximum short-duration noise levels of up to 85 dBa at 50 feet. Using Mr. Watry's attenuation rate of 34 feet, this is equivalent to 93 dBa at 34 feet. These noise levels are very loud and may be significant noise impacts. And these noise levels will occur frequently on the adjacent property. In order to achieve even an average of 80 dBa at the closest approach distance of 34 feet to the adjacent property, grading and other loud construction activities could occur only three minutes in an hour to comply with the ordinance applies as an average. In other words, if a noise level of 93 dBa persists for just three minutes in an hour and the equipment is shut off for the rest of the hour, the hourly average will be 80 dBa. Because there is no suggestion to limit grading at the southern end of the project site to three minutes per hour, the actual noise levels to be generated by the project, even applied as an average, will still exceed the ordinance on many days. Irrespective of whether the construction noise complies with the municipal code's construction noise limit, Mr. Watry's expert analysis of the project's construction noise impacts is substantial evidence supporting a fair argument that the project will have significant noise impacts, meeting the threshold for environmental review under an EIR. By failing to require an EIR for the project, the council has abused its discretion. We therefore respectfully request that the council not adopt resolution number 20-034, denying the petition and instead require the city staff to prepare an EIR for the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we can go to the applicant. Mr. Vidovic, would you like to speak? Is John Vidovic there? Does he, if he does not wish to speak, that's acceptable too? Okay, seeing the applicant not wishing to speak, we will move this back to council. Are there any comments or questions from council members?
Mayor could...
Yes, sure, go ahead. Sorry, did I do something?
Did the applicant clarify if he wishes to read the statement? Or if he wishes the clerk to read the statement that was submitted in writing to all of the panelists? I would recommend that be done.
He does not seem to be responding, but we can go ahead and read that if that's... Okay, do you have that, Madam City Clerk?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe in, see, help us out or perhaps Mr. Vidovic could clarify if he was intending to submit a written comment into the record or not.
I, I'm actually getting a call from John Vidovic right now.
Okay.
Maybe he dropped off?
He still shows as a panelist here.
Yeah, I see that. I also just sent him a chat saying, did ask him if he wanted to speak, so...
So did someone say they're on a phone call with him now?
He, he just tried ringing into my work phone, so I don't know if that's...
So Heather, is that okay if John gets John Vidovic on the phone?
Sure, I just want him to make sure, I just want to make sure he has a chance to present.
He says he doesn't have a microphone. Should be in his PC.
Uh, yes. Uh, yes. Well then, read the statement that he sent, if he, if someone's able to confirm that he wants me to do that.
Right, he, he can call in as well. Does he have the phone number to call in? He may be calling from a desk, he may be using a desktop PC without a camera or a microphone.
That's possible. Yeah, he's using a desktop. So I'm going to ask him to call in, okay?
Okay. Do you have his phone number?
No, I'm chatting with him on the chat.
I see, okay.
So I just received an email from Brian Babcock, our communications manager, and he sent me Mr. Vidovic's statement.
Kirsten, can you possibly post the phone number again, so Mr. Vidovic can see which number to call into?
I would ask, requested our video, please show the slide with that information. Video group could present the slide. Thank you.
This slide does not contain the phone number, however.
Doesn't have the phone number.
Let me see if I can find it.
I can also text him my cell, but I don't know what that does. So Heather, can I do that and then just have him put this up to my mic?
Sure.
Do we need him to confirm, or can we just read the statement?
We can, we can do either or both.
So I do have a phone number that I can read.
Go.
Uh, so if he's calling from an iPhone, it's 1-669-900-6833. I'll repeat it. 1-669-900-6833.
He's calling on my cell. Okay, I'm putting him on speaker.
Tricky way to get the city manager's cell number.
Yeah, yeah, John, that's very tricky.
Okay.
Now the whole town has it.
Erase it once you're done.
I'm sorry.
Okay, welcome, John.
Yeah, can you see me?
We can't see you, we can hear you.
Well, the, the comment I have is, it's an echo here, the comment is that we did the improvements on the roof in concert with the $500,000, and it's substantially greater than the hotel that we were compared to. That's about the end of my, all I need to say.
Did you want to make a statement or, or talk about your statement regarding the MND or the environmental review?
Uh, we believe that the environmental review was inadequate. We've been advised by our council and by everyone that it is adequate.
Would you like the city clerk to read the written statement?
Yes.
Okay.
I apologize, what I received is not regarding the MND or what you mentioned.
Oh, I'm sorry, that might have been my mistake. Why don't you just read the statement that you got?
Uh, it's, it's, the rooftop amenity was considered, and when compared to other amenities of a similar hotel, it is much greater, and was designed in conjunction with an agreement on the improvements, and the $500,000 was appropriate, given the differences of the other hotel.
I'm confirming that was the statement that was received via the chat as well.
Okay.
Okay, very good. So we're going to bring it back to council now, seeing no more comments by the public. And so please raise your hand if you wish to speak. I see council member Chow has her hand raised. Welcome.
Hello, hi. Um, so I'd like to disclose that I did meet with Mr. Vidovic after the last meeting, and he showed me a nice floor plan of the rooftop lounge. And it's not just a rooftop, it's a well-designed lounge with a lot of gathering areas that will provide community gathering places or large parties for, um, what's, I, so I, I was satisfied after looking at the lounge, and then also the development agreement specifically said that this lounge would be open to public from 11:30 AM to 10:00 PM, and sometime in between, it might be closed if there is spatial event. So I thought this really provides something that Cupertino needs, which is a place to have large gatherings. So I'd like to confirm whether the staff can, can provide, what's the square footage of the rooftop lounge, and if the staff can show the floor plan, that would be great.
Sure, I can do that. Just give me a minute to pull it up.
Mr. Mayor, in the meantime, did you want to get other council comment?
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised, so I don't believe anyone else has a comment.
Okay.
So I believe this justifies the-
Oh, I just, I just see John Willie raised his hand. So, uh, do we have that up, do we have that available yet? What?
Yeah, give me, I'm about a minute away. No, not even a minute, 20 seconds away.
Okay.
Sorry.
John, John Vidovic, can you hear okay?
I can hear perfectly.
Okay.
Okay, let me share the screen.
Come on, baby.
I got it.
Great, okay.
Let's do that. There we go. And then let me see if I can, uh, current slide. There we go. Uh, so yeah, so here's the current layout, and I'm showing the distance from the, from the, the property line, from the edge of, also from the property line, from the edge of the, the rooftop. And so you can see it's, it's quite, it's quite, it's quite large. I, I want to take, again, or that's a little over 2,000 square feet. You see there's multiple seating areas, an actual bar, a wine tasting room in there, full bathrooms, and a smaller deck to the western portion that overlooks the neighboring shopping center and, and views to the Santa Cruz Mountains. So if you're okay with this, I can, I can stop the share, or let me know if you have any questions about this slide.
Uh, okay, very good. Thank you. I don't see any other questions, but I do see John Willie has his hand raised. Welcome, John.
If staff can show the street view of the hotel, I think that's important to have. And then, while they're doing that, but also it's for staff, so the, uh, challenge to the negative declaration about the noise, I would ask staff, are they really comfortable that there is not going to be a noise issue when a project this big is being built relative to the residents that are across the street and behind the center? I mean, have, has city staff really looked at the impact of that to, to, to the extent? So that's the, that's my first question.
Let me, let me just share the screen really quick, because you had a question about what the building would look like from the street.
Yeah, that's an overall image, because we're talking about it. I think we need to be sure that everybody in attendance and at home understands the topic that we're getting at. Yeah.
So this is from North Danza?
Yeah, but can you go back and first do the, the, uh, challenge to the negative declaration about the noise impact? Because I don't think that needs a visual. How well have you really looked at the noise impact to the somewhat adjacent residential areas?
Um, so, so yes, I'll, I'll call Terry McCracken up to, she's our consultant, our environmental consultant. But before she does, I do want to state that, you know, staff believes that we've looked at every scenario, and we've done an expert analysis of any situation that we, that we might run into. So I think we've covered all our bases that's required of, of the city and developer under SEQA. And I think Terry can jump in, that'd be great.
And then John, didn't it go, John Matier, didn't it go through the ERC like other-
It did go through ERC, correct.
Okay, so they're the ones that review it for CEQA, correct?
Yes.
So then, if there's anything else to be said, otherwise I'll make my next comment pertaining to that. If, if like the concern that's been raised were to play out, and noise was an issue, when we are dealing with a seven-story building, assuming they're going to be driving piles into the ground, if noise is an issue, does the city have the ability to require some type of mitigation for that? I mean, what happens if it is a problem? What happens if the residents that are in close proximity raise that as an issue? I mean, do we just say, well, too bad? Or is there, does the city have some authority to, to do something?
So John, correct me if I'm wrong, John Matier.
Yes.
Uh, my understanding is that part of this would be noise monitoring during key operations of the construction and demolition of the current site. And my guess is that if it were found to be outside the decibel level, then you would either mitigate it by maybe limiting the number of hours and bringing, they're going to have to bring down the decibels.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's correct.
Constant noise monitoring, isn't it?
Yes, that is correct too. And it's not uncommon that our code enforcement officers do get involved in construction sites. And I do want to remind the, the city council that we do have mitigation measures for noise, which vary from, you know, having noise sense, noise mitigation, uh, equipment onsite, muffler, silencing type of, 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 of methods on, on this equipment, equipment that are in good use, also certain barriers to be set up around, um, certain equipment when in use, I mean, when feasible. So we do have mitigation measures already that are built in to this, to this MND. But yes, but to go back to your original question, yes, we, we do have the authority to go back and add further mitigations if, if, if needed.
So, so, um, good. Just to help reinforce that, so if, if residents then found this to be, you know, too noisy for them, and they needed some type of, um, measures, they could complain to the city staff or bring it to the city council and alert us, and we would in fact be able to require something. It's not that we would be powerless at that point.
Um, yes, I mean, they would come to staff obviously first to make, to make an issue. Can we amend the MND at that point? I don't believe so. I can let Terry answer that question.
Yeah, this is Terry McCracken with Placeworks. I just want to point out that the, the challenge to the construction noise is to the hotel and not to the residents that are nearby. They're, they're using the hotel as the closest sensitive receptor, and that we do, we did find a significant construction noise impact requiring mitigation measures. And so regardless of, of how the noise that, that we've responded to, what I think is summarized really well in response number four in the third response memo, is that we do have mitigation measures in here that require that the applicant during the construction phase don't comply with the decibel limits within the noise code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so maybe one, just to kind of finish that, that top, well, then I'd like to go to the second topic. So those levels that would require there to be some mitigation, can we say that those in fact, uh, cover the challenge where they were saying if you were to have to do a CEQA, and the values that in CEQA would be required? You know, as long as, as long as we have apples and apples, you know, then I'm okay with that type of concern. So if I just go ahead and say, okay, so then we go on to the, the other concern that I have. And so if staff can put the picture of the hotel back up, and if staff can put the, the picture of the hotel back up. Because I, I'd kind of like to have that there as I discuss my concerns.
Just give him a second.
Okay. And I'll try not to be too long, but I want to cover. So when we look at this and how close it is to the street, and the character of Cupertino with the street trees, when a project wishes to change the character of the community for which the general plan is responsible, I think we need to be very careful. And if, if we are going to allow projects to not adhere to the general plan, then I think we truly need to be creating an atmosphere that's not going to cause us grief down the road. Are we going to be able to be fair to other projects that would conceivably want similar treatment? So going beyond the general plan, in the building planes, the building heights, the, uh, street trees being gone, um, the equivalent or the, the, the value that that represents to the developer versus the loss to the community, I think we need to really be sure we understand how to quantify that, so that when we're trying to balance future projects, that we're going to be able to, to come up with fairness. And at the previous council meeting- at the previous council meeting, we suggested that $500,000 sure didn't seem like a significant amount. When we talk about these other benefits, the rooftop being a benefit, you know, how many residents are going to be using it? The shuttle service to the airport, how many residents are going to be using it? The meeting rooms, how many residents are going to be using it? I think we really need to do, you know, more outreach to the residents and see if they really feel those are community benefits that matter to them, to offset this much of a general plan nonconformance. And again, I say that we need to be able to be fair going forward with with other developers, other projects. And I I just feel that we don't have something that we're going to be able to balance fairly with other projects. And we asked the developer about community benefits, and I don't see that that's it. It could have also been better, even a small amount of conformance to the general plan, you know. But no, there's been, there's been no, no, in my view, no real giving back to the community with things that are tangible for the residents, the 64,000 residents of Cupertino. And how we're going to deal with this for other projects along Deansa Boulevard, along Stevens Creek, and even some of the other major streets, I'm concerned. So that's my, that's my two cents worth.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so we have this item. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt. Am I unmuted here? I can't tell. I am. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 20-034, attachment AA, denying the petition which does not meet the requirements of Cupertino Municipal Code, section 2.08.096. Is there a second?
One second.
Madam City Clerk, can you conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
I'm going to say no.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries with Willie voting no.
Okay, now I would like to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 202195, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino approving a development agreement for the development of a new seven-story, 155-room hotel and associated site and landscaping improvements at 10931 North Deansa Boulevard. Assessor parcel number 32610-061. Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 20-2195, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino approving a development agreement for the development of a new seven-story, 155-room hotel with associated site and landscaping improvements located at 10931 North Deansa Boulevard, APN 326-10-061.
Okay, do we need a second or do we just do the?
One second, one second. You do need a second.
Okay, great. Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye. But I'd like to add a comment that, correct, John, John, the picture that was shown didn't show the street trees because it was taken off to show so that we can see the hotel. But I think I clarified last time, all the street trees along Deansa would be preserved.
Okay, so did you vote?
Yeah, aye.
Okay.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
No.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
The motion carries with Willie voting no.
Okay, so item 10 has been postponed, so we are, there's no more communications. We are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Does the staff have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry. My video is off. I'm sorry.
I don't have an end this time.
Okay, so we are on to council comments. You don't, let's see, let's start with Councilmember Willie.
So my my request for an item, so the the study session today was great. I think it helps to get us all further down the road in understanding. There were a couple ones that we said we're going to take offline. But I would like to request that somehow we request city manager and the city attorney to create an official policy for developer projects so that the city staff clearly knows projects need to come in conforming to the general plan, or if they're not going to, they truly have to be presenting serious community benefits. But staff should really be pushing hard on projects conforming to the general plan. And I don't feel we have that policy. I feel that developers come in and they ask for what they, for whatever they want. And I think we need a policy. And if that means it needs to be an agenda item, somehow we need to get that. So that's my request.
Okay, anybody else have requested agenda items? Uh, Doctor, Councilmember Chow?
Hi. So, yeah, I actually, I would like to agree, continue the study session for the study density bonus. I think we did not cover a lot of things this time, specifically the San Francisco planner mentioned that they have specific requirement for forms that people need to provide for to justify for waiver and for concession. And also the, now that with the new law, there are, the city of Santa Rosa has done a study on the different density bonus laws, different cities are applying, that just state law provides a framework, but we need further implementation details for Cupertino. For example, the pre-application that's going to lock in the development standard. What exactly does that mean? Can, would now someone just submit the preapplication and then they would, what if they don't make any further attempt to finish the application? Do they lock in the standard?
Okay, so you would like to have another?
More details on implementation, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I had some questions I didn't get answered because we ran out of time. So I think we should plan for another session like that so we can get the rest of our questions answered. It could be the same kind of thing, a special session before the regular council meeting.
But I think, yeah, but then I I hope that we can focus on more what the cities can still do.
Right, that's a good point. And I think also if we could submit, try to submit our questions in writing in advance, it would speed things up as well. Let's see, anybody else have their hand up? Darcy?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. So I've been thinking about the the issue of rents. And San Jose is considering something that would essentially waive rents for three months. I'm wondering whether we can examine how this might go in conjunction with how the federal relief is going. If you look at the CARES Act funds that have been released to businesses, the implementation has been, has been a bit uncertain and it's up and down. There's something, there are two parts of the program. One of them is the Economic Impact Disaster Loan, EIDL for short. And there is a, an emergency advance of no more than $10,000 that could be just granted essentially to people. And I would think that if you were an individual landlord and you did get that cash essentially, it would be a lot easier to consider that kind of measure for people that are renting in your unit. So that kind of measure, of course, is is far and away more efficacious for keeping people in their homes than something that the city can do, even if we really stretched and put in millions of dollars, for instance. Because, of course, the federal government is talking about, you know, hundreds of billions. And so I'm just wondering whether we can do something to try to coordinate or just study the issue to see whether we can, on the local level, maybe have a letter from our mayor signed, encouraging the implementation in such a way that will help keep people in their homes, if it has, you know, something of a collateral impact, for instance. So most recently, these EIDL grants have been interpreted by the Small Business Administration as being for up to $1,000 per employee that you have, although that is not actually in the law itself. And so I think the environment is very ripe right now with regard to individual voices coming from jurisdictions and talking about what our pressures are on the ground, having a substantial impact potentially on how we can help people on a very broad scale, including in our community. So I would request that we take a look at that overarching issue in conjunction with when we're going to have a potential grant program and or loan program for renter assistance come back to us in council in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. And when I was writing up my thoughts on the whole rental assistance program, it included, you know, what, what can the landlords do based on what they're, they will receive in terms of government assistance? So that's certainly something that we should look into when we're trying to craft a rental assistance program, because I think everybody can kick something in, you know, the state, the city, the landlords, the tenants, everyone can contribute. And no one's going to be entirely happy about doing so. But it's a tough situation, and I think we're all going to have to sacrifice something here. So, yeah, I would certainly be in favor of that. And the city manager can can add that to her short list of things she has to do.
Thanks so much. Mr. Mayor, we do have Sue Bose calling in again. I believe she wanted to speak on item 10. It's up to you.
Well, item 10 was postponed, so there is no speaking on item 10.
Okay. I'll contact her on the site.
Right. Yeah, she could have spoke during oral, but yeah, it's better, I mean, that hopefully that would be back by the next council meeting. And we'll have some, a good discussion at that time. Did anybody else have their hand up? Rod, did you have anything?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I don't really have anything. I, you know, again, I had the concerns about the county's transparency, but the, I spoke about that during the COVID-19 report by the city manager. So it's so early, I hate to adjourn already. Liang, you had another question. Great.
Really? So just to clarify, we will not have another council meeting until the next regular one, that's 21st, right? And all the other commission meetings are postponed? Or are they ongoing online? Can you clarify?
So they are canceled through the end of April unless they are, I kind of went with the quasi judicial, so I went with planning commission and anything related to it like ERC. After, if if the moratorium or the shelter at home continues past that, I do know that there are some other commissions that are starting to schedule their meetings and using Zoom. So.
So after April, we might have commission meetings?
Yeah. And there's a, I think there's a bike ped commission meeting that's spooling up by itself on, I think it's mid to late April. So so there, it's starting to happen a little bit. If they can conduct it by Zoom, then they'll they'll do it.
So what kind of city business is still ongoing? Like, are we still accepting permits for renovation and for?
So we are accept, so the latest county order that came out on the 31st made residential construction a little more complicated for us. So prior to that order, what we were doing was doing inspections and permitting new construction because they said in general housing was good. So now that the new order has come in, we are not necessarily permitting new construction for residential. We have to be a little more on a case by case basis. So for example, a lot of the construction that stopped was any home that was, say, in a framing stage, outside framing, any construction going on that was purely cosmetic that is stopped. However, we are still conducting where appropriate inspections to ensure that certain construction is habitable. For example, if somebody's in the middle or towards the end of finishing a bathroom renovation, we will inspect that until, so they can make it habitable and usable. And that's how it's, that's how it's being approached currently.
And what I mean is, okay, in terms of construction, yeah, we, we cannot, the order is not to do any residential construction that's not below market rate housing. But I'm wondering, could people take this time to maybe file architect plan for a future renovation? It's no, no construction. But then might now maybe it's a good time to get an architect to work on the paper paperwork. So the city is still processing that, right?
Yes, in general.
In terms of paperwork, that's still ongoing.
Anything that can be handled virtually, which we have figured out pretty much anything, even plan set review, if we can handle it virtually, we will do it virtually.
So that's still, we are still accepting permit application for those. That's good. And then in terms of parks and rec, I know that the city are offering some online parks, online exercise classes, yoga classes.
Yeah.
So those are ongoing and?
And those would all be like if we were going, so what I've been trying to do is we first are focusing on delivering essential services. And then all of the other stuff is nonessential. But if we can deliver it remotely, like a yoga class or a class for seniors, we will make every attempt to do that. It's not only good for the community primarily, but it's also good for the employees. So we, we can, just like our outreach system.
If someone, I know that a lot of students, especially K-25, they really don't have a lot of class time, maybe like 10 minutes a day. So I'm wondering if someone wants to offer new online classes through the city's Parks and Rec department, can they offer that?
I would offer this. I would offer them getting in contact with me or Parks and Rec, and we will see what we can do. I am happy to tell you that we've seen a need for kids that are preschool and maybe into kindergarten. And we will be soon offering online story time for those kids. Yeah. And it'll be probably offered multiple times. But sometimes it's, it's, we see, it's a little slow to start because it's not only a learning of the technology, but being able to make sure we can reach, say, for example, the kids in a productive way, right? How do you figure out how to teach or read over over a Zoom and make it fun for them, too? So it's, it's a pretty neat process, but that's going to be coming online here pretty soon as well.
And maybe consider some mental health seminars, because I heard in China, after so many, so long a time of staying at home.
Yeah.
People used to be able to get out to work to take a break from each other. Now you are locked in with your partner, with your kids, and your moms. The poor kids are forced to study all day long because their moms are there, are on their case all day long. So mental health, how, if we can offer some kinds of mental health seminars, that might help people.
And I just say, these are Deb's brief.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and, and so um, we will do our best, but also we need to consider how staff is going through some of this. They're not in the best of morale, which is why I'm saying work is good for them. Um, you know, they just lost a bunch of colleagues this week, so we need.
I have a couple of other things, Deb, I forgot. Um, I would like to have a legislative committee meeting with um, Councilmember Chow. Um, and we need to schedule that and notice it, it's to respond to the League of California Cities Housing Proposal. Um, the other uh, issue, which businesses are considered essential? I see that some cities are uh, declaring thing, I, I know car mechanics have been declared essential. And there's a debate about bike shops being declared essential or not, um, because they do provide transportation um, assistance in terms of repairs to uh, to residents. So I'd like our city to come up with some statement regarding essential businesses. And then finally, so I know we are, we're doing the staff reductions. What is the situation in regards to capital expenditures, like the library expansion, bicycle infrastructure, trails, community gardens, that sort of thing?
So what we've done is we've made a, a cut um, on those items. How do I say it? Those items that were in the budget and that um, council has already given us budget for. You know how we come and ask for these adjustments every?
Right, yes, okay.
If they've been funded that way, we're continuing on with them. If they are not funded, we have defunded them. And so the funded, so to me, you've made those decisions at half year, we can easily take care of those. Um, and still be very sensitive to the budget situation, but that's where I cut it. Cause then now going forward, for example, if we were to come to council and we were asked, planning to ask for something in um, in the next quarter, which would be the end of May, um, we have cut a, a good number of those, if not all of them uh, to the tune of, well, you saw the total, $22 million.
Right, okay.
And so, uh, and part of that is for 19 and part of that is to plan for 20. Now, the reason I haven't published a bunch of details just yet is um, you know, we're, we're a small budget shop. And those big cities like San, I'm a little defensive because those big cities like San Jose and Palo Alto, they've got a machine in there. They got all kinds of people working on their budget. So, and I want to be really careful. I don't want to just cut things because we need, we're doing a knee-jerk reaction. I want to be able to not only be as sensitive to the employees, but also make sure that we can accomplish some work in this environment. Um, the other thing that we are uh, doing is now we're doing planning. If this thing goes beyond May 3rd, uh, my budget picture will be, look different, meaning we will probably have to make further labor reductions that would affect 2020 and 2021. So hold on to that, right? So it's partly, partly I'm doing it in kind of an iterative process. And then I, I looked up um, to respond to your thing about essential businesses. On page eight of the county order, bicycle repair and supply shops are exempted, so they're.
Wonderful, okay.
Item number eight.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if it was an issue in Santa Clara County, but I know in San Mateo County, there was being some debate about this, um, so that's good.
Clear as a bell, right there.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I don't have a gavel here, but I'll uh, use my water bottle and adjourned. Thank you.
Night.